He says that with the confidence.
With a smile, too.
Is Crystal Ball better, more tuned than mine?
Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Bochard?
Here.
Alderman Ravenscraft? Alderman Covert?
Here.
Alderman Bell?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
And Alderman Lewis?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve October 1st, 2024, meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Alderman Covert? First?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to special items, we have none. Appointments to the boards, we have none. Schedule public meetings, none. Just a reminder that any public meeting may be entered to clerk the Wednesday before the meeting. Public hearing, none. Air induction is our first reading. Council Bill number 2024-36, in ordinance authorizing the closing of the Friends of the City account and transfer of the funds within the fiscal year 2025 budget. Staff report?
The Friends of the City 501(c)( has been administratively dissolved by the Missouri State, or the Missouri Secretary of State. City Administrator would like to take the opportunity with board permission to combine the funds in the Friends of the City account with the park funds in the pooled cash account for use towards the park master planning project. Currently, the Friends of the City account has a balance of $22,659.45. This sum is a combination of vendor fees, donations to the park via Friends of the City, and memorial brick purchases. Law firm Nathan Nicholas created the 501(c)( articles of incorporation in 2002. The subsequent bank account opened shortly after. Historically, the Friends of the City has been used by the park board for deposits of donations and vendor fees. The police department donation received in the early 2000s from the Optimist Club for the purchase of a police canine and the donations acquired by past mayor and boards to assist in funding city projects and events. Over the last several years, the account comes from vendor fees and memorial brick purchases, both park-related activities. The funds slated for the police department were expended to purchase an additional rifle for a patrol vehicle this last year. In fiscal year 25, the amount received was $3,384.82 in deposits and expended was $868.81. $228 were for memorial bricks and $640.81 were for Fall Fest expenses. In fiscal year 24, the account received $6,021.38 deposits and expended $1,929 for memorial bricks and $1,869.09 for the Fall Fest and Christmas event expenses. The closure of the Friends of the City requires board approval, the treasurer to physically close the account, complete journal entries, and develop additional funds within the park budget to move the accounts for the funds. Additionally, moving it to the pool account would allow people to pay vendor fees and donations via credit card as well.
So other than for the pool account, will I be able to make donations to the park?
Yeah, they could already make donations.
They can still do it in our rating?
Yes. It just won't be to the Friends of the City. It'll be to the City of Ashland.
Okay, got it.
Is there anything that is currently in that account that was specifically earmarked that would create a new?
No, it's all vendor fees now, and we just bought bricks, so there's no more brick money in there.
Just out of curiosity, because I don't understand this necessarily, but so why was it administratively dissolved by the Secretary of State? Can we ask that? Ask them to do that?
I mean, you're required to do annual filings and whatnot, and those filings just never been done. This is not the first time it's been administratively dissolved. We just don't see the benefit to trying to get it reinstated at this point.
Gotcha. So it's not worth keeping around separately?
The purpose that it originally served has run its course. Originally, we were parking various donations in there, having that money live outside the budget just for ease of tracking or for whatever other reasons. At this point, Parks has its own fund. All that money is operating revenue in the Parks Department. They can easily track that in their parent fund. Plus adding additional features, being able to do that bill pay online if they want to buy a brick or process a credit card here. We can't do that currently with it being a separate bank account.
Any more questions for staff?
Two minutes late. You all have started?
Can I get a motion to approve Council Bill number 2024-36? In ordinance authorizing the closing of the Friends of the City account and transfer of the funds within the fiscal year 2025 budget.
So moved.
I'll second. Second. Alderman Bochard?
Aye.
Should we ask for Alderman Ravenscraft? But she was not here for the?
If it, yeah, if it goes to money, yes.
If she feels she can make a educated vote, then she is welcome to vote, or she can pass.
Okay, Alderman Ravenscraft?
Yes, aye.
Alderman Covert?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Council Bill number 2024-37, in ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds to a certain account within the fiscal year 2025. Staff report, please?
Presented are the six-month budget amendments. Adjustment totals equaled out to $11,721.42. The original budget we passed was $6,803.56. The current budget is now $6,000, or $6,791.814.58. We've had $2,960.42 in activity. The budget remaining is approximately 56%. Exhibit A highlights the beginning budget representation of the budget amendments recommended by staff for fiscal year 25. Estimated revenues increase for the general fund with streets and water as well, specifically liquor and business license, the law enforcement tax, off-duty employment tax, or off-duty employment, street tax, and miscellaneous income. Estimated expenditures were increased for workman's comp insurance premium, some capital project expenses, and contractual and service agreements over time and advertising amended to reflect costs accrued during the first six months of the budget. Really did not do a whole lot of budget amendments. There'll be a second for budget amendments once later on in the year, once we figure out where and when we're going to start using the county ARBA money for stormwater. And then also after a discussion is had with Bartlett and Weston, where we're going with that.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion approving Council Bill number 2024-37? In ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds to certain accounts within the fiscal year 2025. Okay, motion? Can I have a second, please?
Sir.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Covert?
Aye.
Alderman Ravenscraft?
Aye.
And Alderman Bochard?
Aye.
Moving on to open, ordinance number 1493, the ordinance to amend Chapter 20 Traffic Code, One Way Street, South College, and Burnham Avenue. Staff report, please.
This is the second read, filling in for James tonight. No changes to that. This is for transitioning those listed blocks of Burnham and College to One Way. Once read and approved by the board, he'll do much like what we did with Red Bud. We'll place the signs, bag those signs, roll out the public awareness, public information, to let them know that we'll be transitioning to One Way at a set date, set time, unbag the signs. We'll have a ticketing grace period like we did with Red Bud, just to allow traffic to get used to it. That's not a heavily trafficked thoroughfare when compared to Red Bud, so shouldn't be too big of a deal there. But like I said, once approved, we'll put together that schedule to get those signs out and get them revealed and make it a one-way.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion approving ordinance number 1493, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20 Traffic Code, One Way Street, South College, and Burnham Avenue? So, can I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Bochard, please. Alderman Bochard?
Aye.
Alderman Ravenscraft?
Aye.
Alderman Covert?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Ordinance number 1494, an ordinance authorizing the closing of the Friends of the City account and transfer of the funds to the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Second.
Second read. All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. You got, can I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Covert?
Aye.
Alderman Ravenscraft?
Aye.
And Alderman Bochard?
Aye.
Ordinance number 1495, an ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds to certain accounts within the fiscal year 2025. Second read.
Second read.
Number four, the questions, can I get a motion to approve ordinance number 1495?
So moved. I'll second.
Alderman Bochard?
Aye.
Alderman Ravenscraft?
Aye.
Alderman Covert?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on to new business, 2024-57, a resolution accepting the quote for replacement of two steel doors in the city hall.
All right, so this is a request for a replacement of a couple of doors. Last month, put out for bids to three different vendors, and the low bid was clean-bid glass and mirror incorporated at $6,832. That's for the replacement of the west door at the end of the hall. Some of you who come in that door, you know in the summer it sticks. What's not worse than being able to open a door, it's not being able to close a door, so. So, yes, they will replace the doors. We'll use the existing hardware if possible. Go from there. So, if the board or the person agrees with staff recommendation, the mayor should be allowed to authorize staff to complete the purchase of the replacement doors.
Just that door?
It's that door and also the employee entrance.
Is it sticking to?
Yes. They're the same, same style door. They're all steel, and so when it gets hot in the summer, they just swell up.
And this, if someone does say southeast door, you mean northeast door, right?
I tuned to northeast door. I apologize for that. I don't think there is a southeast door.
The drive through.
Can I get a motion approving 2024-57, a resolution accepting a quote for replacement of two steel doors in the city hall?
The only question that I did have, have these same professionals looked at the current doors to see if they are repairable? Because I know probably in-house it's been looked at and tried to be adjusted.
We actually had, so the contractors that did this remodel, we had them come out and look at those doors within the first couple of months of taking over this building while it was still under warranty, because they've been quite literally sticking since we moved in. We've also had the security company that did the door access control come out and look at it to see if the access control systems were causing it to stick, but as stated, like, they just swell up when it gets hot or cold. They stick open, stick closed. Wouldn't necessarily be an issue if we were physically locking down this building every day, but since it's access control and it's triggering locks to lock and unlock, it just causes a security concern during certain times of the year. The police department has routinely checked on primarily that door after those business hours to make sure it's shut, and that's just not something that we would like to continue forward with. If we get them replaced with the glass doors like we have on the front of the building, that'll alleviate that concern.
So it's not the same, it's not going to be a steel door?
No, it can be glass doors like the one on the front of the building.
So it could be tinted, so that it doesn't blaze into it?
That one will. We'll have security film on, on that one like we have on the rest of the windows. Not so concerned about the one on the back of the building. Because of the trees, maybe? They'll block the sun, or just they won't be that bright? And that's the public entrance, and you can't see anything but a hallway through that door. That one being the private employee entrance. We'll make sure to have film on that one.
We got a quote for both of them to be tinted.
Any other questions?
Did you just get one company to bid on it, or?
Three.
Three, okay.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve 2024-57? A resolution accepting the quote for replacement of two steel doors in the hall. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, 2024-58, a resolution authorizing the agreement for LETI expense reimbursement. Staff report, please?
This is a kind of a war-plained agreement that several area agencies are using in just an attempt to recruit some of our costs. It's very expensive to hire a new police officer. We have an applicant that's willing to start. We're hoping to get him into the November 4 Academy. So this is just a kind of a three-year prorated reimbursement agreement. If he leaves us early, pays us back for a prorated portion of his training. We are hoping, our last couple of folks that we've paid to go to the academy have gotten scholarship to be reimbursed for the actual LETI cost, which is $5,000. And we're hoping we'll get that again, get some help, but that's kind of the purpose. It's the same agreement several agencies use in our area, so. But it is a contract, so it has to be approved here.
Any questions? Any concerns? Can I get a motion to approve 2024-58? A resolution authorizing the agreement for LETI expense reimbursement. So moved. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Resolution 2024-59, a resolution to move the meeting date of the Board of Aldermen. Staff report, please?
As we briefly discussed the last meeting and via email, I've been kind of pulling around trying to get some ideas for moving the November 5 meeting date. Since that's election day, we have some planned absences, plus with it being the election, just making sure that everybody has time to vote. We do have an extra Tuesday in October, so the proposal was to move that meeting same time to October 29th, the last Tuesday of the month.
Any questions? Concerns? Can I get a motion to approve 2024-59? A resolution to move the meeting dates of the Board of Aldermen.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to reports. Mayor's report, just a couple of things. Gateway Archway at the corner of the entrance of Forest Park, light pole is leaning over there, so I don't know if it's been hit by somebody or if it's just damaged, it's a black light pole.
Can you define the lane, Mike? Okay. Because I mean, there's few over there that we've reported, and that they're just a little off.
Oh, these are. And then, I had a constituent ask me about recording the PMZ meeting. Is there a way that we can record the meetings for public access, like we do ours? I mean, I know they don't have to be in this room, but is there a way to?
I mean, it's just money. Yeah, it's just money. We have to figure out a cost to set up something somewhere over there. I don't know what it would cost. I mean, that camera was 700 bucks, that microphone was 300 or 400 bucks minimum. That, we would need a new computer over there, because it currently has just a little tiny PC, about that big, that would not be sufficient to stream off of, so.
Why couldn't they just meet here?
They can. We generally don't let the other commissions and committees meet in here, because there's no way to secure that door, not that there's any concern there, but just with general public coming in for those meetings, they're not always being staff present. For example, at Park Board, sometimes there's not staff present there. Putting it in that room where that's the only thing they have access to just gives us a little better feeling. But that's not to say that we couldn't move them over here as well. Let's see what the cost would be to do that. I mean, it'd be beneficial to have some better setup in there, because we do use that for plenty of other meetings that sometimes require, you know, a Zoom or Teams meeting, so. Wouldn't be a bad idea to look at making some improvements over there. We've tried with that small PC that's over there, and it's capable for some small uses, but it definitely would not have the capacity to use the streaming service that we use in here.
I feel like all the state offices have one of those Owl things. It looks like an Owl.
It's a $1,000 camera.
Yeah, but it has the speaker and everything in it.
That's a good one to get.
Yeah, and it kind of auto.
Yeah.
So we're seeing more and more cities are broadcasting their committees and lesser meetings, perfectly fine, perfectly legal. My only thought would be just to, if you decide to go forward, produce a notice for the board members just to remind them, hey, you're on film now.
Correct.
There is a certain amount of decorum, and then it might not be bad on the notices as well. So in PMZ, you have folks that are discussing potential business plans. They should be aware of the fact this is being broadcast, this is being stored, you know? If you start getting into the details of, well, my business plan is to do X, Y, and Z, perfectly fine, perfectly appropriate, but they should be advised of the fact this is being broadcast.
Yeah.
I even seen them put just like a sign up in the room that just says, notice.
You can put a sign up. You don't have to do any of these things. I just think it's.
I think it's polite.
A prudent practice to remind everyone, hey, this is being filmed.
All right. Thank goodness, my report. Mr. Minister, your report?
All right. It was briefly mentioned earlier that Bartlett West is quickly approaching that guaranteed maximum price on the wastewater treatment expansion. We should be meeting with them in the next two weeks to get that finished up and dialed in, at which point Bartlett West will come back to present that guaranteed maximum price to the board so we can evaluate next steps on the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Park survey is now closed. We're awaiting an update from the consultant as they work through reviewing all those responses and generating the next step of documentation for review by staff and Park Board. The compensation plan, initial results have been received by staff. We're in the process of reviewing those right now and providing comments and feedback. Once that's all rolled up, there'll be a presentation to the board as well as next steps for potentially implementing the proposals in that compensation study. And that, you're registered, you're registered, you're registered to listen to Todd speak tomorrow at lunch hour.
Yeah, I can go.
Would you like to? Anybody else have some lunchtime availability tomorrow?
Yeah, can anyone else go? I just found that out yesterday.
No big deal if you're unavailable. That is all I have.
So you have a tiny report?
Tomorrow at Mune at the Optimist Club, I will be giving a 30-minute speech on Home Rule, which is about becoming a charter city. The punchline is charter cities have more power. It's hard to become a charter city. I will be explaining that and taking questions. If you're ready to come, if not, no problem. Please, Chief.
Nothing exciting. Actually, we're hoping to, we currently have two full-time openings. We're hoping to fill one of those, finalize that tomorrow. We wait towards that tonight. So the applicant has accepted a conditional offer, with this being one of the conditions. The other two we have filled already, and so already got an appointment set to meet with the applicant tomorrow. Hope we get that started, and then, of course, it'll be several months before he's actually productive, but we got, because he's got to go to the training academy and then field training with us. But all indications are, it should be a very good hire. And we'll, we just have one opening, and we'll continue to try to find the right person to fill that.
Thank you, sir.
We are, also, James and I switched places so that I have some breathing room at the beginning of the month to get the monthly report to you, and so, as you know, it's included in your packet this time. And so, again, nothing earth-shattering in there, but it certainly makes, I think, makes things a little smoother.
Third color.
It's pretty nice, isn't it? Rick Smith does that, and he is, he's very adept at that kind of thing. Very good.
I usually get an Excel spreadsheet in those towns.
Thank you, sir. Community Development Report, please?
I only have one thing to add to my report, and that is, some of you may or may not have noticed that down there at 300 South Hendrick Clay, which will be the national departments or whatever they're in, they have repaved three-quarters of the parking lot there. New asset. So that's slightly different. With that, I'll ask if anyone has any questions.
Mr. President?
The only thing that I want to notate on mine is that I will have the six-month financial report done, your signature, the second, or what would be the second meeting in November. Now is the first meeting in November. The only meeting in November. But that'll be done, so we can get that published. And if anybody has any other questions?
Any questions for Mr. President? No? Moving on to Board of Aldermen? Alderman Bochard?
The only thing I really have is something we've discussed before, but I know there's anything that can be done about trucks driving through the break time grass, scattering mud, water, et cetera, et cetera, all over the street. That hole just gets bigger and bigger every day, so I'm assuming winter, you know, there will be ice and muck and all of that stuff, potentially making it an unsafe issue. I know that we kind of kicked that around with MoDOT, but, I mean, at least Taco Bell put some boulders on their side, which hasn't completely stopped, because there's some people scraping up against them, but it has definitely prevented the giant ruts just driving through the middle of the grass. So if there's anything that can be done. Especially with morning traffic, there's a lot of larger vehicles coming in, and the whole other lane is occupied usually, so they pretty much, if they come out that way, have no option but to drive through the grass. That's it.
I'll circle back with James on that. I think the last time we discussed with MoDOT, it would involve some designated truck robbing on our property. I don't know that MoDOT had any desire to do any restricting on Y itself, but we have a sign that we don't want trucks on east side drive.
So is that like, so I think I remember from last time we talked about it, it was, you know, MoDOT would do whatever we wanted to pay for, kind of a thing. And I don't know if it's our problem or Break Time's problem or whoever's problem, but, I mean, I just happened to notice today that the, like, let's say the sidewalk that goes behind O'Reilly's on the Y side is a standard sidewalk. I don't know if that was their, is it their choice? I don't know if that was.
It's MoDOT spec.
Why does MoDOT and I have that same spec up the street, which would at least have a concrete surface for them to? Yeah, I mean, you don't want them driving on the sidewalk, but at least it'd be like three feet of sidewalk rather than.
You're talking in front of Taco Bell?
Well, yeah. I mean, the one that I'm talking about now is because Taco Bell put the boulders. So coming eastbound out of Break Time, driving through the grass and hitting that light pole, which has been hit like three times. But O'Reilly's, like, if there was a sidewalk that was the size of O'Reilly's sidewalk, I would think that it would.
The Google Earth view clearly shows ruts in the grass.
I mean, it has to be. It's been like that since it was built.
Why is people driving through the grass?
Well, what happens is trucks.
It's the semis.
Yeah, semis, larger trucks that can't negotiate that turn, that don't realize where they're going, will just drive through the grass, and it's, I mean, it is a three-inch curb. And then they just drive over it and through the grass. I saw a guy out there fixing the sprinkling, sprinkler system. Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what it looks like. There was a guy fixing the sprinkler head today, which I believe probably has been run over.
Right, going breakdown on the other side of that one.
But, I mean, if the curb.
As soon as it starts.
Like, if, yeah, that's exactly.
Oh, my gosh.
And in the, in rainy weather or winter weather, it slushes mud and stuff all up into the street. But I didn't know if, to even cut that curb and sidewalk it or whatever, if that's a MoDOT thing, it's an US thing, it's a Break Time thing, but I'm sure Break Time doesn't love that.
You'd almost want to put a guardrail for, you know, 15 feet or something.
I mean, it's a mess. I mean, I can't imagine, we alter mows it, you know what I mean, and they're just like.
I'm sure you guys know what he's talking about.
Crazy.
I didn't, though.
But anyway.
The quick answer is.
Get my bearings here.
Product of sidewalks, probably not the only fire naturally when breaks out was built out. Not that that would resolve this particular issue. This, this issue dates back to 2010, when that subdivision.
And I don't really pay for that street light. I'm getting, is that MoDOT, or do they bill us? Because if it's ours, I don't think we should pay to replace it every three months.
We just pay for the light.
The light, yeah.
But so they have to come reset it?
Yeah.
Still, it's like every three months. If you look at it now, you, there's a chunk out of it. They just put the same one back.
Knocked off over here.
It's silly. Anyway.
But you know, like those, I don't even know what you call them, like the inside of the roundup?
It's like the October 23rd.
Ramp thing that, like, that's where they're buttoned up. that's like the little ramp thing, that like, that's where their button goes when they, yeah, whatever that is, that like gives them some extra room, could you put an apron on that side to kind of give them extra room? That then wouldn't be.
Well, that's, so that's a question, is that.
Presumably, MoDOT will do whatever we want to pay for.
Yeah, that's the question, that was like, ultimately, whose responsibility is it to make sure? I know that that was engineered by not MoDOT, but to MoDOT specifications or approval. So does it have to be re-engineered? Does Break Time have to say, we'll pour some concrete there? But whoever, it'd be cool if we did something.
So for instance, would a tanker truck have to go that way to refuel the station?
No.
No, but what happens is.
They're supposed to be going down to the next.
Yeah. If you come, if you come out the wrong way in a semi, you don't have really any other option than reverse down the road, so if you make a wrong turn to begin with, the only way to get back to 63 is to drive over that.
As we talk, the truck.
Well, what they do is they. If they do come in. The second ones. Their faces are also choked. Each, well, they come up that way.
Yeah, I mean, I have seen them, I mean, they at least do it when it's safe, it's not like causing a wreck, but I have seen them where if they come out the wrong way, we'll just wait till there's no cars, and they'll shoot out the right turn only across the median, which again is not legal, but also not super safe. But anyway, that's enough of that, but it's just something that we can do.
We'll bring it back up with them and see what we can get accomplished.
Alvin Ravencraft?
No, nothing.
Alvin Cobert?
I think we're just still working on that Forest Park detention area, that they have the, I think the developer has an October 31 deadline to have that solved, so just keeping an eye on it. That's it.
Thank you. Alvin Bell?
No report.
Almond Wilson?
No report.
Almond Lewis?
The only correspondence I got, which I think probably most of you did, was from a constituent that was concerned about the old nursing home, that was afraid that it was going to be Section 8 housing and illegal immigrants moving in there, so. I did not respond to him, I do.
I, yeah, they posted it on Facebook, pretty sure.
I have not spoken.
I saw it on Facebook as well. I got a text about it, or a couple of texts about it.
But I think it may have been addressed to you.
I didn't, I don't think I got the email. I didn't see it. For what it's worth, I asked my husband about renting to illegal immigrants. I'm pretty sure for them, you have to have an ID, and you have to pass a background check, and you have to have, it's like a credit history.
Yes, if you, if the landlord are trying to operate above board.
Well, didn't they say the average rent's going to be like 1300, 1400 dollars?
Yeah, I mean, we had to stop work on them for the sprinkler system over the last couple of weeks, so I mean, that's just increasing the cost, so the rents are probably going to be higher than what was initially proposed.
Yeah, it was addressed to everybody, but not you, just to the board and Doris.
I know we got that email about values or something, you know, mission statements and things. Yeah, we could work on rumor, social media rumor, marketing. That would be something I would like to see. Seeking out the truth.
I think it's, I mean, I think it is important to at least respond to him or to, I mean, other people in kind, because we've talked about this before, unfortunately, it's like, I mean, they're like, I hope Ashland's elected leaders will stop it, forbid they've already approved it. I mean, one, we don't have any say on the type of tenant that a private business decides to rent to. That is completely outside the realm of our.
Probably what the easiest person action would simply be to send them the recording of the meeting where it was presented and told exactly what it was going to be.
Well, I just mean, it's a general sentiment, right, that we run across is that we hope the Board of Aldermen stops, insert private business who operates completely independent of anything that we have power over, you know, that kind of thing. But again, I guess we just respond to it right now, so.
Yeah, I know I've given this warning before, I know we have some new members. You have, it's, there's this fuzzy tension. The Board of Aldermen speaks with the city of Ashland through resolutions and ordinances. You personally cannot, you know, bind the city and speak to the city. You do have a constitutional First Amendment right to express your personal opinion, that's perfectly fine. I invite you all, as the ordinance says, if you express an opinion, in my opinion, X, Y, and Z. On this subject about public housing, I remind everyone of the Fair Housing Act, which is a federal law that applies and says you cannot deny housing or financing for housing on the basis of protected classifications, including national origin. Not implying that we've done anything wrong, we haven't, but I just remind folks when people make comments, and I understand the populist view, as an attorney, I worry this could be deemed as an invitation to discriminate against someone in housing, which you cannot do.
But the city wouldn't even be on the hook, that'd be the.
Right, that's exactly right.
Private business owner. I think the point is, in the meeting, they clearly stated it's not going to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, they said no Section 8, and they said average rents are going to be like in excess of a thousand bucks.
I mean, just looking at the email quickly, I mean, he's stating that he's hearing rumors, so the easiest thing would be to respond and say, here's the facts, watch the video, this is what we know to be true.
I do think it would be nice for someone to at least respond via email. Doris, that sounds like it was addressed to you.
I will respond. October 11th is the date of the email, if you are struggling finding it?
Sharon Lewis, anything else?
Oh, that's it. All right, moving on to general public comments for Alvin's staff. Any none? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sir. Can I have a second?
Sir.
Alvin Fager?